I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Wiegand.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wigington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All the aldermen present, roll call department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Phil Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Human Resource Director Sherry Faber-Salvatore.
Yes.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Interim Director of Residential and Commercial Development Services Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearmint.
Here.
Kenny Vaughn's excused, Chief Clay's excused, but Captain Heffron is here on his behalf. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if you'd stand, if you're able, and please join me for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to our last meeting for this fiscal year. I'm not, we kind of think in terms of the fiscal year here, so I'm not sure where this fiscal year has flown by. There's no public hearing this evening. At this time, I would open public participation if anyone is wishing to speak or address the city council tonight. Now would be the time to raise your hand. Hearing, seeing no one, I will close public participation and we'll get on with the meeting. The first order of business, once again, I said last time when we had Debbie Bevel's retirement, her last day was last Friday. We have two aldermen tonight who are, this is their last official meeting, they're still, they're still serving until May 1 starts the new fiscal year. So at this time tonight, I'd like to ask, and I guess there's no reason you guys don't dislike each other that we can't call you both up at the same time. If we can have Mike Bitner and Scott Tyler come forward. To each of them, to Mike Bitner, who's immediately to my right, they both have served four years. So the flag's pretty much read the same, so I'll read it. Present to Mike Bitner and to Scott Tyler in grateful appreciation for four years of dedicated service to the city of Bellevue while serving as Alderman Ward Two and Ward Three, 2015-2019. And gentlemen, I sincerely do thank you because until people put their name on the ballot, run for an office, and do this, they really don't totally ever know what it's all about. So I do thank you for what you've done, and your service, and I appreciate it, and I know, I don't know that you're both vacating the city or anything, but you're.
No, we're fine. I called in Tom Poor. That's fine.
I could have asked one of the other wards, and that'd have been 10 minutes there, huh, Phil? We could have made a, a couple of you could have made a good, a good little speech. Okay, we move on, but I do again sincerely thank them for their, for their time and their Changes do continue to move on. At this time, we move into the regular portion of the meeting, and we have the, I'd ask for a motion to consider approving city council meeting minutes held April 1, 2019. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Roger Wigington, second by Shelley Schaefer. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Payroll, claims payroll and disbursements, I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $1,603,979.88, and the payroll in the amount of $871,528.80. Do I hear a motion? Mary Steele, Joe Hazel, second. Any discussion or questions about the claims, disbursements, or payroll? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries, I feel bad for you. Treasurers' report dated March 2019 and a statement of cash. Thanks. I think we know who I am by now.
If you were dove, you might have got.
We're gonna have to get a, this thing is just beveled. It just slides on off. So I, I'm asking for a motion to receive and file the treasurer's report from March 2019 and the statement of cash and investments report from March 2019. Alderman Elmore, second by Dittelman, any discussion on that, those two reports? All in favor of receiving and filing for audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go on to the zoning boards. You want me to read them?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
We'll get this done.
One minute?
Not bad.
I'll have one for you.
Can I read them together?
Yeah, anybody.
Or as a group?
Do we have any objections, she reads them together?
I would like to keep 11-A3 separate personally.
And A2, or just A3?
Just A3.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I follow you.
Okay. 11A1, 08 March 19, Sikorsky signs, a request for a sign installation permit in the area of special control at 6 East Washington Street, parcel number 08210450033, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city code 155.052, 155.053, Ward 6, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. 11A2, 09 March 19, Well of Living Water Ministries, a request for a use variance to operate a church at 6500 West Main Street, parcel number 07120210029, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable section of the zoning code 162.570, Ward 8, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. 11A4, 11 March 19, Michael Bilkey, a request for a sign installation permit in the area of special control at 117 West Main Street, parcel number 08210437027, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city code 155.052 and 155.052 or 53, Ward 2, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. 11A5, 12 March 19, RIBO Enterprises LLC, a request to rezone 501 Hekker Street from A1 Single Family Residence District to D1 Light Industry District, parcel number 08220215024, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.090 through 094, 162.305 through 308, and 162.590, Ward 1, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve and have the proper ordinance drawn, 11A1, 11A2, 11A4, 11A5. Alderman Consilla makes the motion, Alderman Gah second, and everybody understands we're holding that one for the moment. Any questions on these as read? All in favor of approving these motions coming from the zoning board and having the proper ordinance drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's go back to 11A3.
11A3, 10 March 19, Well of Living Water Ministries, a request for a use variance to use a secondhand article drop-off container at 6500 West Main Street, parcel number 07120210037, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the code 113.046 and 162.570, Ward 8, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we tabled this for further discussion. Several years ago, we had a problem with the secondhand, with these boxes popping up all over the city. Through your efforts and how, and streets and housing, we really got a handle on controlling these. We're starting to see a lot more pop up again around the city, and my concern is that there's, there's no way to police these, and I would like to table this until we can decide exactly where we're going with these secondhand article drop-off boxes.
And when you brought it to my attention this evening, I didn't have a chance to talk to Anissa. I know we had some added that didn't get approval, I don't know where we're at with the number, and I do know what's been a problem is, many times when they get full, there, everything's outside the boxes.
Right.
So I don't have a problem until we can kind of do a little follow-up for a two-week table, but Anissa, have you got any update on this?
The issue is, in some instances, some of these boxes are being dropped off without the owners even giving permission for them to be on the property, and they don't have any type of signage for us to follow up. So what we've been instructing owners, as they've called us, is they're perfectly within their rights to have it removed from their property if they didn't get permission. What the ordinance that was passed in 2008 allows is for, in instances where people want these boxes, for them to come forward and receive a variance. So I'm not quite sure how this works because they're following the process that's outlined by the code and by the ordinance, and I don't know how to separate this versus those who are doing things against the code and are subject to code enforcement action.
I think staff, I think we do need to have some dialogue about this because I could be wrong, but I think that, I think they did get a little bit, I don't want to say out of control, but I think that they got, we kind of lost track of it maybe. So I, I think it'd probably be good for two weeks.
And Mayor, at the arcades, and of course, I was in that center for a long time, I, I just don't know where, it's gonna have to sit on the sidewalk, which means it's gonna have to.
According to the, according to the application, they intend to actually keep this by the refuse containers, so by the dumpsters in an area where it wouldn't be highly visible and it wouldn't get in the way of foot traffic.
Are those dumpsters behind the buildings?
Actually, they are.
Yeah. Like I said, oh, you ladies are here.
So you wouldn't see them.
We would, we would love, I think we would love to get with you and just make sure we have the proper placement and double-check our ordinance. We're not against it, but we did have it kind of out of control for a while, and then the biggest thing is, and I'm glad you're here, that sells a lot, but we had a lot of them that the companies who set them up didn't always come get them, and then there'd be stuff on the outside stacked, and then it would rain, and then we were calling the garbage truck to come get it, and, and so I think we just want to have a conversation and see if we can fine-tune it a little bit, okay?
And Anissa and Mayor would also, in a particular ward, if aldermen see these boxes cropping up, would it be who, the alderman to notify?
They need to call Anissa's office because if.
Actually, they can do a report of concern.
Yeah, they can do a report of concern, and then we'll follow up because we, we won't disagree with you, I think more have popped up than we thought. Yes, ma'am?
It's an existing box.
Oh, it is.
At the moment, we have now, which is here on Main Street, in the back of our church at this time, we just want to transfer that box to the new location.
Okay, well, that, that's information I wasn't aware, let's, let's just get together, and then we'll bring it back formally, but I, I just would like to check on a few things. When Roger came to me before the meeting.
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page and that all the aldermen understand, you know, that, you know, several years ago, you worked pretty hard to get that ordinance passed because it became a huge problem.
Well, and if you remember several years ago, and I think Jenny, you were, some of them were for out of the area, and they were for profit, and they weren't even, it wasn't even going, there was assumption it was going to help people in the median area with clothing, et cetera, and some of them are for a profit, far-profit group that were out of Chicago, I think it was.
We'll be able to clarify, a lot of this was discussed in reference to this particular property as far as the pickup schedule, the location, that type of thing, so, you know, we can always provide you with a copy of the minutes from zoning board to draft those because these issues were discussed in reference to this. As far as those that are cropping up, in some instances, it's trial by error, if we see them, we attempt to have them addressed, but if someone does see them, it helps us that they're reported so we can act on them if that's possible.
No, you're, you're right, and if, we'll get with you, if you've got Anissa's information, we'll follow up.
We'll have her contact information.
We'll follow up and we'll, we'll have, we'll get this straightened, I'm sure. Okay? Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'd like to second Alderman Wigington's motion.
We have a motion by Alderman Wigington, second by Alderman Consilla to table this for at least two weeks, okay? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go on now to item 11B. I'd ask for a motion to approve, or ask for consideration to approve a development agreement with Empire Comfort Systems, Inc., for the sale of the property and construction of a parking lot located at 943 Freiberg Avenue. And I think if you look at the packet, the sale is for $1, but the big thing in there is also that the proper easements are laid out so that we have them for our sewer project that we must maintain. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Gah, in your ward, any discussion on this particular proposal? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go on now to motion from Traffic, Alderman Ovian.
Thank you, Your Honor. 11C1, motion to amend Chapter 76, parking schedules, no parking on South Ternian Street, east from West Ring Street to Martha Street, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Ovian, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Pousa, do I hear discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir?
I will abstain on this, though.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the Parking, Traffic Committee's recommendation on 11C1. All in favor of this motion and have the proper ordinance drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go to Streets, Alderman Wigington.
Would it be your pleasure, I read all four together, or separate?
I don't have a problem if the council doesn't, you guys?
Anybody? Read them, well, you got them.
Read them together, okay.
Happiest Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve 40 Contracting Incorporated, the amount of $204,290 for 2020 Sidewalk Program MFT TIF funds, and Hanks Excavating, the amount of $216,352.50 for 2020 Sidewalk Program TIF funds. 11D3, motion to approve Gonzalez Companies LLC, the amount of $11,015 for the preliminary conceptual design plans to repair the bicentennial park spillway TIF funds. 11D4, motion to approve 40 Contracting Incorporated, the amount of $146,944.50 for 2019-2020 ditching MFT TIF funds. 11D5, motion to approve Kaskaski Engineering Group LLC, the amount of $169,051 for the West Main Street servicing 17 to 28th Engineering Services Agreement, so moved.
We have those three motions coming from the Streets and Grades Committee, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion on any of those four motions? Roll call.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Finance Committee, Alderman Consilla.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer. Do I hear discussion on the proposed budget? We've had public hearings, we've had several finance meetings, quite a few discussions. If there's no other questions, roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries, and again, I want to say thank you to, to Jamie and to all of my department heads and to all the aldermen here. It's a team effort, it's, it's never easy, but it's, everybody seems like everybody's on the same page with understanding the, the footprint here we have for this next fiscal year, so thank you very much. We move on to E32, Ken.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director.
A motion by Consilla, do I hear a second? By Pousa, do I hear discussion? Any discussion on the amendments? Okay. Hearing none, roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
to all the Aldermen here. It's a team effort. It's, it's never easy, but it's, everybody seems like everybody's on the same page with understanding the, the footprint here we have for this next fiscal year. So thank you very much. We move on to E32, Ken.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director.
A motion by Consilla, do I hear a second? By Pusa, do I hear discussion? Any discussion on the amendments? Okay. Hearing none, roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
And ordinance passes. Unfinished business, motor fuel claims under miscellaneous and new business, I'd ask for a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of $17,981.18. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Randall. Any discussions on the motor fuel claims? Roll call.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordnances number 8319, 8320, 8321, 8322. I'm sorry, 8321 was tabled, okay? Back off of that one, thank you.